Good evening. I'd now like to call our regular meeting to order. Thank you for tuning into our virtual city council meeting tonight, March 22nd, 2020, 21, as we continue to follow public health guidance to avoid the spread of COVID-19. As a reminder, items will be taken in the order they are listed on the agenda. Before we get started, I wanted to briefly go over the public comment procedures for the evening. All public comment on the consent calendar, matters of council interest, and items not on tonight's agenda, and all comments under the two proclamations we will be giving this evening will be taken at one time, and that's during item number five. Comments on other agenda items will be taken only when that item is called. You may use the raised hand feature on Zoom to speak. If you're joining the teleconference by phone, you may raise your hand by dialing star nine and star six to unmute your microphone when prompted. Please only raise your hand at the time that the item on which you are speaking is called. The allotted time for public comment may be adjusted if there are a large number of speakers. Council members Aguirre, Espinoza Garnica, G, Ready, and Smith, Vice Mayor Hale, and myself will participate by teleconference pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N-29-20. The city council chambers will not be open to the public. The meeting is being broadcast live to Redwood City residents on Astound broadband cable channel 26 and Comcast cable channel 27, AT&amp;T U-verse channel 99, and are streamed live via the city's website at www redwoodcity.org. As a reminder, we are now enabling video when city council members, city staff, and guest presenters are speaking. We ask for your patience with any technical difficulties. I'd now like to ask our city clerk if she will call the roll.
Good evening. Council member Aguirre.
Here.
Council member Espinoza Garnica.
Here.
Council member G.
Here.
Council member Ready.
Here.
Council member Smith.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Here.
And Mayor Howard.
Here.
Thank you.
If you'll please join me now in reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance in honor of our flag and our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. We now move on to item number four, presentations and acknowledgements, with 4A being a proclamation condemning anti-Asian violence and racism. Tonight, we want to bring awareness to a very serious issue that has gravely affected our nation and our community. Unfortunately, the COVID-19 pandemic has manifested anti-Asian sentiment that has led to an increase in hate crimes and other racially motivated attacks across the country. You may have heard about the recent heinous attack on Asian-Americans in Atlanta, and now more than ever, we need to work together to put an end to these unimaginable acts. The city of Redwood City is committed to the safety and well-being of Asian-Pacific Islander Americans in combating hate crimes that target one's race and ethnicity. In light of recent events, we prepared a proclamation condemning all forms of anti-Asian sentiment and violence in Redwood City and across the nation. Joining us tonight, we accept the proclamation. To accept the proclamation is Wayne Lee, president of the San Mateo County Asian-Pacific Islanders Caucus. I will now read a few excerpts of the proclamation. Whereas Asian-Pacific American communities are suffering acts of discrimination, hate crimes, and microaggressions due to fears of COVID-19, and whereas due to the increased occurrence of violence against Asians, the League of California Cities Asian-Pacific Islander Caucus has issued a statement denouncing the senseless attacks that occurred in Atlanta, Georgia, where at least eight people were murdered, six of whom were of Asian descent. And whereas we stand in solidarity with all those who have suffered at the hands of senseless violence and call attention to the continued rise in anti-Asian motivated attacks, and whereas in Redwood City, 11.5% of the total population is of Asian and Pacific Islander descent, and whereas anyone who has either seen or been a victim of these senseless attacks is strongly encouraged to report it to the Stop AAPI Hate Center. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Diane Howard, mayor of Redwood City, on behalf of our city council and the residents of Redwood City, do hereby condemn all manifestations or expressions of racism, xenophobia, discrimination, anti-Asian sentiment, scapegoating, and ethnic or religious intolerance, not only in Redwood City but throughout the nation, and call upon our community and all public officials to denounce anti-Asian sentiment in any form. I would now like to welcome Mr. Wayne Lee to give his remarks and receive the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Greetings to you and members of the Redwood City Council. It's an honor to receive this important proclamation and awareness of what's going on in our nation. As you know, racist attacks against Asians has ridden 150% in the last year, and this is a systemic problem. It's not just about Asians, it's about racism in general. And that's something that the caucus is trying to address with many of our other cultural friends. My name is Wayne Lee and have the honor of representing the San Mateo County Asian-Pacific Island Caucus. Council member Jeff G is a founding member and a treasurer, a very important person. The caucus was started by elected and former elected council members in San Mateo County to promote equality and support diversity and of course support Asian-Pacific Islander issues. But anybody can join. You can just visit our website, www.smcapi.org, and go there for more information. Again, I'd like to thank Mayor Howard and the city council for providing us opportunity to discuss a very troubling issue that has infected our nation. Racism and misogyny is a very old disease that dehumanizes people to justify violence and disenfranchisement. It justifies the objectification of women, the enslavement of a race, the inhumane separation of immigrant children from their families, and deadly attacks against elderly. I'm here, as I suspect many of you are feeling, am angry, frustrated, disgusted, and maybe a little fearful. Fearful that our country and its ability is being attacked by a few who cannot see the light. The light that Martin Luther King explained eloquently as a savior from hate. Only love wins over hate. But don't confuse love with weakness. Hate is a weakness. It is the easy way out, to blame others for your frustrations. When I was in middle school, where there were only a handful of minorities, a white kid decided to take his frustration on me by beating me up after I left class. There was no apologies from the school or the school districts. There was no checking up on my welfare after the incidents. There was no offer of help afterwards. It was all up to me. Then on, I decided to take vengeance. Vengeance on the system that sweeps hatred and racism under the rug. A system that creates barriers to promotions, equal pay, and equal opportunities. I suspect that many of you at home are wondering what you can do to seek answers to this pandemic of hatred brought on by people in the highest office who said it's okay to behave badly. Physical and backdoor racist assaults are not okay. Racist assaults are not okay. So here's what maybe something you might be able to do. Get educated on other cultures. Get educated about the different communities in our great nation. The nation that we all love, believe in, and fight for. Volunteer in your community. Get out of your comfort zone. Get comfortable with a new perspective and new culture other than your own. So that love wins over hate. Now, I want to also announce that there's going to be a press conference by the police chiefs in San Mateo County and the sheriff at Central Park in San Mateo this Wednesday at 11 o'clock. Come join us. Wear a yellow vest to protest against institutional misogyny and racism. You can get yellow vests at the hardware store or we'll loan you one when you get there. With, the caucus is also hosting an online discussion with the district attorney and sheriff on what this county is doing to win over racism. This Saturday at 11 o'clock, you can visit our website, smcapi.org, to register and get more information. Again, I'd like to thank Mayor Howard and the members of the Redwood City Council for getting in front of this really horrific chapter in our US history. Bless you for your strength and courage, and God bless America. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lee. Really appreciate your kind words. And council member G has requested that he would like to speak. Council member G?
It was a sunny afternoon in the city of San Mateo. There were several hundred people gathering together, including local elected officials. State Senator Josh Becker was there, Assembly members Kevin Mollin and Mark Berman and others to denounce the growing violence against Asian-Americans in the Bay Area and in San Mateo County. The date is February 27th, 2021, and the call to raise our voices is from 12-year-old San Mateo resident Ashlyn. As the first set of speeches are completed, the group marches up Fifth Avenue to El Camino Real to raise our voices against anti-Asian racism. As the group proceeds south on the sidewalk along El Camino Real, a car drives by. Someone in a car rolls down their window and yells at Ashlyn and the group, "F you." There was no hiding. It was crystal clear. The hate and the intensity that was directed at Ashlyn and the group could not be misinterpreted. The Stop API Hate website has been collecting statistics on a number of anti-Asian hate incidents for the past year. From March 19th, 2020 to February 28th, 2021, over 3,800 incidents have been reported nationally. Some highlights from this report. Women report hate incidents two times more than men. Chinese are the largest ethnic group reporting and experiencing hate. Incidents are coming from all over the country, all 50 states and District Columbia. And businesses are the primary site of discrimination. Anti-Asian racism has been around for a long time. It is not new. Another API elected shared with me in a meeting over the weekend is just a new chapter in a very old book. Well, the time has come to close that book and start writing a new one. Racism, bigotry, harassment, bullying has no place. Whether you are Black, Latinx, LGBTQ, or Asian, each community has had to deal with hatred. There's a lot of work that needs to be done, and the only way I know how to do this is to work together. Thank you, Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Hale, my council colleagues, for this resolution. I ask that we stand together, we need to stand together, and work together to make a difference. Thank you, Mayor Howard.
Thank you. Mr. Lee and council member G, so well said. Thank you very much for sharing those words. As Martin Luther King said, "An injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." Let's heed the words that have been said tonight and work together. Thank you both. Thank you, Mr. Lee, for being with us. On a lighter note tonight, we are also recognizing the American Red Cross. It is the American Red Cross Month, which takes place during the month of March to acknowledge the many volunteers who have stepped up during this unprecedented time. John Waddell from the Bay Area Chapter of the American Red Cross has joined us tonight to accept the proclamation. I will now read a few excerpts. Whereas March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to honor the kindness of our neighbors who aid families in need every day in Redwood City, across the United States, and around the world. Their dedication touches millions of lives each year as they carry out the organization's 140-year mission of preventing and alleviating sufferings. And whereas the Bay Area Chapter of Red Cross serves nearly 4.5 million people across the counties of Alameda, Contra Costa, San Francisco, and San Mateo, and whereas last year the Red Cross collected 1,075 blood donations in San Mateo County, provided first aid, cardiopulmonary resuscitation, and automated external defibrillator training to 3,097 individuals, and installed 136 smoke alarms in San Mateo County. And whereas this life-saving work is vital to strengthening our community's resilience, nearly 200 years since the birth of the American Red Cross by founder Clara Barton, we dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance her noble legacy, and we ask others to join in their commitment to care for people in need. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Diane Howard, mayor of Redwood City, on behalf of the city council and the people of Redwood City, to hereby proclaim March 2021 as the American Red Cross Month in Redwood City and encourage all residents to observe this month and support the humanitarian mission of the American Red Cross. I will now turn it over to Mr. Waddell to give his remarks.
Thank you so much, Mayor Howard and council members. It's nice to be back before the council. Obviously, we've had a really trying year, and hopefully we're all coming to the end of that. The Red Cross continues to do the work that they do during the pandemic. I did want to let folks know that one of the challenges during the pandemic's especially been blood donations. So if anyone's interested in getting back and donating blood, they can go to redcross.org/donate and give blood. It's always in need, as always. And we really appreciate the work of the council and the Redwood City working with Red Cross during disasters we've had in the past, obviously fires and other disasters. Red Cross has responded and it found a great partnership with the city. So thank you so much for honoring the Red Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Waddell. Do you have, would you like to give anyone a website or a contact if they would like to donate?
Yes, sorry, I may have rattled that off a little quickly. Redcross.org/donate will take you to the blood donation page.
Well, thank you for repeating it again, I appreciate it. And thank you for being with us tonight. We'll now turn to item number five, which is public comment on the consent calendar, matters of council interest, on the proclamations, or on items not on the agenda. At this time, we will take public comment that on items, and I'll repeat again, that are not on the consent calendar, on matters of council interest, on the proclamations that were given, or on items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to make public comment at this time, please click the raise hand button on Zoom to be recognized. And then if you're joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute yourself when prompted to speak. In order to see how many speakers we have for general public comment, I ask that everyone who wishes to speak at this time, would you please raise your hand? At this time, we have seven speakers. I'd like to give it just a little bit more time, in case someone comes in late. At this time, we have a total of seven speakers, and our last speaker is Rachel Holt. I will call two speakers at a time so that you can be ready to speak when the first speaker ends. And if you would please, not minding speaking, limiting your comments to two minutes, and the clock will start when you begin to speak. I'd like to start with Mr. Pat Willard and then Allison M., please.
Madam Mayor, today the national anthem is but a shallow list of words. As the reading of it began, I stood and placed one hand over my heart and bowed my head to honor and remember my Asian heritage sisters murdered by a racist bigot white supremacist. When the reading moved to the words "one nation, under God, indivisible", I raised my other hand skyward with a clenched fist. Let me go on to say that in 1871 in Los Angeles, California, there was a Chinese massacre performed by the white citizens of Los Angeles. As I'm wont to do at every city council meeting, I will refer to this month as another Black History Month. Mayor Howard, in 1901, the Atlanta, Georgia Police Department arrested a white woman and a black man for having committed the crime of talking and walking together down the street. They probably thought the white woman was crazy and maybe took her to the mental health commissions location. As far as I know, at least, my black brother was crazy too, because he was taking his frickin' life in his hands, walking down the street, charming, no doubt, a white woman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willard. Allison M., and then Chris Johnson.
Good evening, council. I'd also like to state, of course, my solidarity and support for the Asian community, both Asian-Americans naturalized here and Asian nationals, Chinese nationals, visiting from abroad. I spoke the day after this event at the Harbor District and, you know, couldn't really make it through it due to emotion, and I like to feel like now I'm just resolute, you know, every day, thinking about how I can make micro overtures and also macro and do what I can, participate and speak. And so I have much solidarity and, you know, I hope that we'll get past this stronger and better. And I'd like to speak on Dock Town, and there's not much time within which to speak, but I'd like to note that Ray Mueller and Drew Combs, who are the former and current mayor of Menlo Park, have voted not to hire this Burke law firm that is representing the city in Dock Town and has really led the city astray. And the money being spent on defending these lawsuits when the State Lands Commission never said Dock Town as a marina has to go, and it's been like a ghost town since 2013. It could be making money for the city. And the current footprint, it's still the same Dock Town, and the people that are here are the 10% that are lawful under State Lands Commission policies for safety and security. There still are 15 people down there, and I would like the four newest elected council members to know that they can look at how this has unfolded, and they can reverse it and stop it. The money is absolutely adding up. There will be 15 more buyouts, and they're doing scorched earth disrepair.
Thank you. My next speaker is Chris Johnson, and then Jimmy Hedges.
Good evening, city council, city staff. My name is Chris Johnson, I'm a resident of Redwood City. And I'd like to comment on item 6H on the consent calendars this evening and following up on an email sent earlier today on the subject. I was reading the ordinance, and I noticed that the requirement of a limit of 576 square feet for a second floor of a detached ADU was missing from the ordinance that was approved by council at the March 8th meeting and on your consent calendar this evening. Perhaps I don't have all the facts, but I don't see why this was dropped from the ordinance, and it would be great if we had an explanation from our city manager or city attorney, because there was no public notice nor council decision or debate on that subject. Changing an ordinance without public engagement could lead to legal challenges on the issue. If you don't have a limit on second-story ADUs, you'd have an immediate return to the most contentious projects where you had a single-car garage torn down, replaced by a three-car garage, and then topped by a 700-square-foot ADU. In fact, you could build a 1,000-square-foot garage as long as you're within lot coverage constraints, and you could put a 1,000-square-foot ADU on top of it. If I'm not mistaken, the ordinance cannot be changed significantly without public notice or a council decision on the topic, and would appreciate some clarity on this provision of the ordinance on your consent calendar this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jimmy Hedges, and then Dan Slanker.
Mayor Howard, city council members. We have a situation here in District 2 Centennial Neighborhood which just cannot be tolerated any longer. At 8:40 Brewster, there is a wine bar, which is following no rules on capacity or wearing masks. The police have been there twice in the last week. About three weeks ago, there was a stabbing, a block from there. And they have tables sitting out on the sidewalk, which I'm not sure they have permission to have. And we also just had shoe casings picked up near Winslow Street. We need to take the handcuffs off of the police and let them start putting them on the criminals. Just handing out a ticket for stealing a vehicle is horrible. Now, I don't know how much control you people have, but you gotta get the police doing the job that they were hard to do, or take the $500,000 you have set aside for people to come in and talk criminals out of their, whatever they're up to. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Slanker, and then Clara Jackal. Mr. Slanker, can you unmute yourself?
Thank you. Hi, my name is Dan Slanker, and I'm a registered professional engineer with 20-plus years of experience at Mercury Marine, and I'm a Dock Town resident. Thank you, mayor and council, for a chance to speak this evening. Displacement is second only to the loss of a loved one. This is a well-documented statement, and if you have ever been through such, I'm sure that you would agree. This council has more of a chance than any other before so far to reverse these actions at Dock Town. My kids grew up at Dock Town. They knew all of the neighbors and all 130 slips. We are now down to a few, and these are the most vulnerable residents. It doesn't have to be like this. No environmental issues were found, and the creek was clear. And the questions of legality or not, of living on the water, are clear to us now that it can be considered legal. And so it's possible. As a young engineer in the concepts group at Mercury Marine, it was clear that the hardest part of doing anything was knowing whether it's possible or not. It is possible for Dock Town to stay. This council could be the council that saves the historic floating home community of Redwood City. Thank you.
Thank you. Clara Jackal, and then our last speaker is Rachel Holt.
Yeah, this is Clara Jackal. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I wanted to say I appreciate the proclamation made condemning anti-Asian violence and racism. I too also was horrified by the murders in Atlanta last week. And I'm deeply distressed by the news of Asian- And I'm deeply distressed by the news of Asian, anti-Asian harassment and violence happening locally from attacks on elders in Chinatown in San Francisco to the caller and Congresswoman Jackie Spears' recent town hall, who reported verbal harassment of her children in school district on the peninsula, to the news this weekend of a disabled Asian man's car being set on fire here in Redwood City. In the latter case, the news report indicates the victim's sister is concerned this could be racially motivated, and it's very important to take these concerns seriously and not dismiss them out of hand. It's likewise important to recognize that even without perhaps an explicitly articulated racial motivation, this is happening in the context of anti-Asian racism that was just discussed, that has such a long history in the U.S. and has been especially exacerbated by COVID scapegoating, has sanctioned and emboldened violence against Asians and Asian-Americans over the last year. So instances like these are shaped by and form part of that pattern. I want to call on all of Redwood City to work together as a community to protect and defend our Asian neighbors and to respond to their concerns. And also understand that there is a rally being held this Saturday at 12:30 El Camino in Jefferson, and call on everyone to join in solidarity. Thank you.
Thank you. My last speaker, Rachel Holt.
Thank you, Mayor Howard and Council members. I must admit, I thought that the handling of the ADU ordinance couldn't get any worse, but when I read what was attached to today's agenda, which included the line-out of the size limitation of second-story ADUs, I was shocked, quite frankly. Of course, that was considered when the council unceremoniously pulled the ordinance from the consent calendar, because of course the recommendation and adoption at that point had been 16 feet. When council considered it yet again and adopted a 20-feet height limitation, there was absolutely no discussion of continuing the limitation, quite frankly presumed that they would presume such limitation. To now see that same limitation lined out in this ordinance, giving absolutely no due process to members of this community as to the ongoing impact that would create, is disturbing, to say the least. I beg of you that you pull this yet again as that this consideration was not discussed. The public was not given an opportunity to address it, and it would be inappropriate to adopt this ordinance with this lined out on this agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holt. Thank you all for your comments tonight. If you were not able to provide public comment, please email your comments to the citycouncil@redwoodcity.org. At this time, all public speakers can stay on the Zoom call or continue to follow the meeting through the live broadcast, either on the city's website at www redwoodcity.org or on cable television on local Channel 26, Comcast Channel 27, or AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. Moving on to item number six, the consent calendar. These are items on the calendar. They're routine in nature and are approved in one motion. Tonight, we are pulling Item 6H, which is a consent item addressing changes to ADU regulations. It will be at our next regular city council meeting on April 12th for a new first reading. So that item will be pulled. Do I have a motion or a second or discussion around the rest of the consent calendar, please?
I move acceptance of the remaining items on the consent calendar. Council member ready.
Thank you. Council member ready. Is there a second?
Second, Council member Aguirre.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I'll ask the city clerk now if she will call for the vote.
Thank you. We'll start with Council member Aguirre.
Yes.
Council member Espinoza Garnica.
To clarify, this is to vote on everything, and then we're allowing the item to be pulled, 6H to be pulled?
All items except for 6H, which will be heard at the next council meeting.
Oh, and then can we have a discussion about that, or is this?
Council Espinoza Garnica, no, we won't be discussing that item tonight. It'll come back to us at our next meeting, which is April 12th. And at that time, if you wish to have a discussion on it, but tonight, we will not be voting on it.
Oh, and I can vote either to move it to April or vote not to move it to April?
No, it's already been decided. It's been, that's okay. It's been pulled, and it will be included for a new first reading on April 12th, 2021.
Okay, thank you for clarifying, Mayor Howard.
You're welcome.
I vote yes.
Thank you. Council member G.
Yes.
Council member ready.
Yes.
Council member Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll not, I will now read all the items that have been approved. The 2020 Annual Housing Progress Report, the Award Contract to Fair and Peers for the Citywide Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, and the Vision Zero Action Plan, findings that the adopted REACH Code's local amendment is reasonably necessary because of local climatic, geological, and topographic conditions, agreement for emergency vehicle repair services with Golden State Emergency Vehicle Service Incorporated, Amendment Number One to Professional Services Agreement with TruePoint Solutions LLC for utility billing software development services, purchase of one-fight freightliner cab and chassis with a telescopic boom crane, approval to adopt proposed changes to the Redwood City 2021 Legislative Platform, approved minutes of March 8th, 2021, and March 15th city council meetings, and approved claims and checks from March 22nd, 2021 through April 12th, 2021, and the usual and necessary payments through April 12th, 2021. Moving now to item number seven A, which is the city council appointments to the Library Board and the Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Commission. Our city clerk, Pamela Algolar, will introduce the item.
Good evening, Mayor Howard and City Council members. Tonight, you are being asked to make appointments to fill two vacant partial-term seats on the Library Board expiring June 30th, 2022, and one vacant partial-term seat on the Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Commission expiring May 31st, 2022. Earlier this year, a recruitment was conducted to fill these partial-term seats, and the city clerk's office received responses from 16 qualified applicants to be considered for appointment, 11 for the Library Board and five for the Parks and Recreation Commission. These applicants were interviewed by the city council at a special meeting on March 8th. Tonight's staff is also seeking your approval to use the current applicant pool from this recruitment to fill any additional vacancies that occur on the Library Board and Parks and Recreation and Community Services Commission that may occur through January 31st, 2022. The appointments will be made by roll call vote. A candidate must receive a majority or four votes in order to be appointed. So unless there are any council comments or questions before proceeding to the vote, Mayor Howard may call for public comment at this time. And first, I'd like to ask if there are any council questions. We can go to public comment.
And in order to see how many speakers we have, I ask that everyone who wishes to speak on this item, please raise your hand now. This would be regarding our city council appointments. I see no speakers. So I believe that we will, I will turn it back over to our city clerk, Ms. Algolar. Would you like to proceed?
Certainly. We'll start with the appointments to the Library Board. When I call your name, council members, please state the names of the candidates you wish to appoint to the Library Board. You may state only two names. The first two candidates to receive four affirmative votes from the council will be appointed. And we will start with Council member Aguirre.
Heather Liu.
And Anna Lee Marz.
Thank you. Council member Espinoza Garnica.
Hello. For Library Board, I'd like to nominate Heather Liu and Desiree Bartley.
Thank you. Council member G.
Desiree Bartley, Heather Liu.
Thank you. Council member ready.
Desiree Bartley. And Elise Debussy.
Thank you. Council member Smith.
Desiree Bartley and Heather Liu.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hale.
Desiree Bartley and Anna Lee Marz.
Thank you. And Mayor Howard.
Desiree Bartley and Hoyn My Hoyn. I'm sorry if I mispronounced the name.
Thank you. So with a majority of votes, Desiree Bartley with five votes and Heather Liu with four votes will be appointed to the Library Board. We will now move on to the Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Commission. When I call your name, please state the names, the name of the candidate you wish to appoint to the Parks and Recreation Commission. You may state only one name. The first candidate to receive four affirmative votes from the council will be appointed. And this time, we will start with Council member Espinoza Garnica.
I'd like to nominate Charlene Tinka Blackman.
Thank you. Council member G.
Evening, Charlene Tinka Blackman.
Thank you. Council member ready.
Charlene Tinka Blackman.
Council member Smith.
Charlene Tinka Blackman.
Thank you. Council member Aguirre.
Charlene Tinka.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hale.
Charlene Tinka Blackman.
Thank you. And Mayor Howard.
Charlene Tinka Blackman.
By unanimous vote, Charlene Tinka Blackman is appointed to the Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Commission. And staff has a second request, and that is to keep the applicant pool from this recruitment open until January 31st, 2022.
I'd like to ask for a motion.
Excuse me, could we, may I, may I ask a quick question about that? Could we clarify? Does that mean that if we need, if we need appointments in these two boards, we wouldn't be going and getting additional recommendations until January?
We, we would include the applicants in this pool if there is a vacancy that needs to be filled, and they would not have to reapply if they were still interested. We would confirm their interest and include them in any further recruitment.
But new applicants would not be prohibited from applying?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarifying question. Want to be sure that we all understand that. So I need a motion and a second.
And I also thank you for that clarification. And I, I move acceptance of the staff recommendation and with the votes that were just given. Council member ready.
Thank you. And is there a second?
Second, Espinoza Garnica.
Thank you, Council member Espinoza Garnica, for the second. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. We'll start with Council member G.
Aye.
Council member ready.
Yes.
Council member Smith.
Yes.
Council member Aguirre.
Yes.
Council member Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Ms. Algolar, could you remind me when with the swearing-in will be?
The swearing-in of our newly-appointed commissioners and board members will be at our next meeting on April 12th.
And I did want to say to everyone who applied, thank you so very much for applying. I hope you will not be discouraged, and I hope you'll look for other opportunities to serve us in Redwood City. Thank you so much, and congratulations to those who were chosen. Moving on now to item number eight, which is a public hearing, amendments to the fiscal year 2019-20 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program, in order to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. Our housing leadership manager, Elin Lancaster, will give a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Howard and City Council members. Tonight, I'll be presenting on the Second Amendment to the city's 2019 Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant, or as I'll refer to it, CDBG program. This amendment will allow the city to use a special allocation of CDBG funds to respond to the COVID, to COVID-19 impact. My presentation tonight will cover three questions that the city council should be thinking about during the presentation: background information on the action plan process, an overview of the special allocation of CDBG funds, which I'll denote as CDBGCV throughout the presentation, proposed changes to the 2019 Action Plan, and then lastly, the recommendations for the city council's consideration. The three questions for the city council are: Does the city council want to allocate additional CDBGCV funds to the existing COVID-19 Emergency Assistance Program? Does the city council want to allocate CDBGCV funds to the new COVID-19 Child Care Provider Assistance Program? And does the city council want to allocate CDBG funds to the planning and administration of CDBGCV funding? So as some background information, every year, the city receives an annual allocation of CDBG funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. These funds are meant to address the affordable housing and community development needs. And every year, the city prepares a consolidated plan, which is a strategic plan that provides priorities and strategies for how the city will meet the needs of low-income community members. Consolidated plan is carried out through annual action plans, which identify the specific activities and funding sources that'll be used to address the goals identified in the consolidated plan. In March of 2020, the CARES Act was adopted, which made available CDBGCV funding to help address COVID-19 impacts in the community. In April of 2020, the city was awarded an allocation of $448,000, and in September of 2020, the city was awarded a second allocation of $642,000. In total, the city has been awarded just over $1 million in CDBGCV funds. In May of 2020, the city amended its 2019 Action Plan to allocate the first round of CDBG funding, CDBGCV funding, to the city's Emergency Rent Assistance Program. The Second Amendment thus before the city council tonight will allocate the second round of CDBGCV funds. Although the city is operating under the 2020 Action Plan, which covers from July of 2020 to June of 2021, in order to use the CDBGCV funding, the city must amend its 2019 Action Plan, again, as HUD requires jurisdictions to amend the same action plan for each new CDBGCV allocation. As I've mentioned, CDBGCV funds are intended to fund CDBG-eligible activities that prevent the spread of COVID-19 or facilitate assistance to households economically impacted by COVID-19. In addition, HUD has allowed jurisdictions to spend up to 20% of the grants on administration and planning costs. And while there are several types of CDBG-eligible activities that could address COVID-19 impacts, almost all of the CDBG regulations are still in effect. This includes Davis-Begins prevailing wage, procurement standards, and environmental review requirements. All of these requirements can add additional administrative burdens, depending on the type of project that is being funded. And so therefore, staff wants to just highlight that it's important to strike a balance between addressing an urgent need in the community and using funds for a project that is feasible within current staff capacity and resources. And so tonight, before you, we are recommending that $275,000 be allocated to what would be a new COVID-19 Child Care Provider Assistance Program that I'll discuss later tonight in my presentation, just under $150,000 to the city's existing COVID-19 Emergency Assistance Program. And we're making these recommendations for these two programs because, one, they are CDBG-eligible. They are feasible to implement with current staff resources. And most importantly, they're addressing a need in our community that we're seeing for rental assistance, mortgage, utility assistance, and of course, childcare provider assistance. We're also recommending allocating $218,000- We're also recommending allocating $218,000 to the planning and administration of the CDBGCV funds. The city is allowed to allocate up to 20% of the total grant amount to administration. However, the city didn't allocate any funds from the first round of funding for administration, so we're proposing to allocate the entire amount from this second round of funding. Additionally, if we don't allocate these CDBG funds for administration, then we'd have to use our very limited general fund money to administer these programs. And this does reduce our ability to pursue other housing policy initiatives. These proposed allocations were reviewed by the Housing and Human Concerns Committee during their February 2021 meeting, and they recommended seven zero that the City Council approve these allocations. And so just to provide a little more detail about what's being proposed, as I noted, just under $150,000 is being proposed for the city's COVID-19 Emergency Assistance Program that is administered by the Fair Oaks Community Center. The program provides rental mortgage and utility assistance to individuals who have experienced loss of income due to COVID-19. And with this additional funding, we're projecting that at least 18 additional households will be served. I also want to give an update on the rent assistance funds that have been allocated through the Consolidated Appropriations Act that Congress passed back in December of 2020. And as you may be aware, San Mateo County received approximately $47 million in Emergency Rental Assistance Program, or ERAP funds, and the county has opted to have their entire $47 million allocation be administered through the state's program. The state ERAP will cover unpaid rent owed from April of 2020 through March of 2021. And then if there are still funds available, it'll provide assistance for April through June of 2021. All of the state ERAP funds must be spent by August 2021. Conversely, CDBGCV funding can provide assistance for up to three consecutive months for any month starting from March of 2020. And the city has until June of 2023 to spend the funds. Our intent is to take full advantage of the $47 million that's coming through San Mateo County, and that the CDBGCV funding is intended to provide assistance for the months not covered by the state ERAP program, and once the state expenditure deadlines have passed. And then moving on to the childcare assistance program that's being proposed. For some background and context, this past summer, the county of San Mateo distributed $2 million of the county's CARES Act funding to childcare programs that have been adversely impacted by COVID-19 through what's called the County Childcare Relief Fund. The program provides grants that cover one month of operating expenses, up to $10,000 for family childcare homes, and $55,000 for childcare centers. The countywide program was oversubscribed, and there is still a need for assistance to childcare providers in the city. According to the state database of childcare providers, there are 69 active family child cares in Redwood City. Forty-six received funding through the county's Childcare Relief Fund. However, 23 providers did not receive any assistance. And so as a result, what we're, this program will be proposing is to assist up to 23 providers with CDBGCV funds. And depending on funding availability, additional family childcare providers would also be eligible for these funds. And so the Childcare Coordinating Council of San Mateo County, or 4Cs, has proposed to replicate in Redwood City the county's Childcare Relief Fund. And the intent is really to help stabilize and sustain the availability of in-home childcare here in Redwood City. The 4Cs proposal would include providing grants to cover one month of operating expenses up to $10,000. And this is an eligible CDBG activity under microenterprises assistance, as long as the applicants meet the microenterprise definition of a business that has five or fewer employees. Additionally, greater flexibility has been provided through HUD that allows the applicant to be considered a one-person household based on business earnings instead of collecting income documentation from the entire household. So we're hoping we'll be able to serve more people with this, this change designation. So lastly, the recommended actions for the City Council's consideration are to adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the 2019 Action Plan to provide $642,288 in CDBGCV funding to the city's COVID-19 Emergency Assistance Program, COVID-19 Child Care Provider Assistance Program, and CDBGCV planning and administration, authorizing the city manager to execute all related documents, and then authorizing the city manager to approve programmatic changes to the COVID-19 Child Care Provider Assistance Program, as well as the COVID-19 Emergency Assistance Program. And here are again the three questions for City Council's consideration, and this concludes my presentation for tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing. And I did want to note that David Fleishman from 4Cs is also available on this call to answer any questions about the childcare program.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lancaster. Great report. Thank you. Are there any questions clarifying from council? Councilmember Ready?
Thank you, Mayor Howard, and thank you, Ellen, for your, for your report. One distinction is so, our Redwood City, I guess I missed this piece of your report. San Mateo County is accepting the, the state, is involved in the state program. Does that include our Redwood City residents as well?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Okay. So, and one piece that I might, is there a distinction between the, the Redwood City's program, which would be, which the CDBGCV funds would support, right, rather than the county program, which I have the impression might have regulations that the city might not have, which would prevent families from being, let's see, I'm not saying this very well. I have the impression that the state program might have regulations that some of our Redwood City families would not be able to, to meet. And I'm, I'm thinking that maybe Redwood City, which would be using the CDBGCV funds, would have less stringent regulations, which would help more of our Redwood City families. Is that correct?
I didn't go into significant detail of the state's program. There is additional detail in the staff report, but there are some restrictions on the state funding. Our approach is we're encouraging as many people to apply for the state funding, but we recognize there are some gaps in what the state covers that we hope the CDBGCV funding will fill and any of the other kind of funding sources we have going into this program. An example being, the state funding right now is giving a preference to households earning up to 50% of area median income. CDBGCV funding allows up to 80% of area median income, and so, you know, households in that 50 to 80% range, you know, might be assisted with CDBGCV rather than the state funding. And I, and I do want to acknowledge that Terry Chin is our Human Services Manager, is on the call and, or in the meeting and probably could answer these questions a little bit better than I can, but hopefully that answered your question. Councilmember Ready?
Yes, thank you. And I, I just wanted to maybe have that question be public because there's a reason why we need to be supportive of the CDBGCV funds. And I, and I just wanted to demonstrate that there was a reason for supporting it. So thank you for that.
Ms. Chin, did you want to add anything to the answer that Ms. Lancaster gave?
I think that what she answered was probably sufficient in terms of Councilmember Ready's question for now, but happy to answer any other questions that might arise.
I did want people to know that not every city in the Bay Area qualifies for community block grant funds. There are strict guidelines in order to qualify, and one of them is to have an approved housing element, which Redwood City does quite religiously. So I am very proud of the fact that our community does this so that we can qualify for the extra funding to help more residents in our city. Councilmember Aguirre?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ellen, for this presentation. I appreciate, so exciting to be able to do this kind of work for our community and to get the funding that we have, especially for childcare and the rental assistance programs. I do have a question about the, the planning and administration. So how did we arrive at that amount, which seems to be pretty high to me compared to the amounts that are given to the other two? And maybe you can put that slide back up to the other two areas. And so I know that we were able to do this work, and, and now we are looking at ways to cover that. So can you address that?
Yeah, and it would be helpful if you could go back to Slide four. Thank you. So we can spend up to 20% of our total allocation on planning and administration. As you can see on this slide, we actually received just over $400,000 back in the spring of 2020, and we allocated that fully to rent assistance. And so we can spend 20% of the over $1 million that we've received to date. And when we allocated the $400,000 back last year, we didn't take out any for planning and administration. So we're taking out what we were allowed to take out for planning administration from the first round and the second round, but it's all coming out of the second round of funding.
Okay, so we're basing it on 20% of the overall amount, not the new amount.
Correct.
But we were able to do that with the first round of funding without using anything for planning and administration?
We are, we were using other funding sources that we will now credit. We will allocate funding to credit the staff time we spent to date working on this grant.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
Thank you. I also wanted to add that with community block grant funds, that's standard practice. Every agency who applies is allowed 20% for administration, and that's pretty common practice. And I admire the city, once again, that you took from probably general fund money to pay the fees of staff so that we could, at a very crucial time, give out the money that was so desperately needed. So I'm glad at this time we're able to backfill some of that money that we had spent. So thank you for the explanation. I see Councilmember Ready, your hand is up. Did you have another question?
No, that's a mistake. Thank you for pointing that out to me.
And Councilmember Aguirre?
No, I just didn't lower my hand. Thank you.
That's okay. I wish I could help you and do it, but thank you. All right, now we'll move on to the public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. In order to see how many speakers I have, I ask everyone who wishes to speak, please raise your hand now. At this time, I have four speakers. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this specific item? Now I have three speakers. Any, anyone wishing to speak to this item? Community block grant funding. Okay, then there are a total of three speakers, and the last speaker is Kristin Anderson. And then there'll be no more public comment taken after Kristin Anderson speaks. If any additional speakers queue up after the last speaker, you'll be asked to email your public comments to thecitycouncil@redwoodcity.org. Each speaker will be given two minutes to speak. I'll call names in the order that hands were raised, two at a time, and the timer will begin when you begin speaking. Let's begin with Sarah Kinnahan and then Dana Chung.
Good evening, Mayor Howard and Councilmembers. My name is Sarah Kinnahan. I am the coordinator for the San Mateo County Childcare Partnership Council. We're an advisory body to the County Board of Supervisors and the County Superintendent of Schools on matters related to the planning for childcare and preschool. I'm very excited to see Redwood City considering the use of CDBG funds to support in-home family childcare businesses. This is a really innovative way to support these microenterprises who have been hit hard by the pandemic. Family childcare providers have been frontline heroes during the pandemic, keeping their doors open to provide childcare for essential workers while grappling with new health and safety protocols and smaller cohorts of children. The $275,000 for childcare provider assistance that is being considered tonight would go a long way towards supporting these essential businesses in Redwood City, and I hope you will pass the resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kinnahan. Dana Chung, and then Kristin Anderson.
Hello, good evening, Mayor Howard, Councilmembers and staff. My name is Dana Chung. I am the Executive Director of Community Equity Collaborative, a local nonprofit organization. I support the allocation of CDBG funds to the Childcare Provider Assistance Program. As the administrator of the San Mateo County Childcare Relief Fund, our organization is intimately familiar with the dire straits of the Redwood City's childcare providers that have found themselves in this pandemic. And even before this crisis, Redwood City was in a childcare crunch with a shortage of 3,536 childcare spaces back in 2017. Home-based providers are especially vital to families with infants and toddlers, children with special needs, families in need of non-traditional or extended-hour care, and those who live in underserved communities. And the childcare infrastructure is not easily replaceable. A combination of local permitting and state licensing requirements, lack of usable, affordable space, and extreme development expenses and timelines make childcare centers one of the most complicated businesses to open. To that point, I am thrilled that you are considering this funding tonight. Childcare is not only vital for families who use it, it is critical to the economy. The lack of childcare has caused millions of parents to leave the workforce since March 2020, leaving 40% of businesses unable to fill vacancies, according to the U.S. Chamber. In contrast, every dollar spent on childcare results in $2 of short-term economic output, a higher multiplier than most industries. There is a long-term impact for children in low-income families who receive high-quality early learning and care, and who have dramatically better life outcomes. Finally, for parents with childcare, they are better able to keep a roof over their heads, and when we invest in this care, we increase property values significantly. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Chung. My last speaker is Kristin Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor Howard and City Councilmembers. I'm Kristin Anderson, the former city childcare coordinator, and I just want to ditto Sarah's and Dana's comments and encourage you to support the use of the funds for the childcare program as well as the emergency assistance program. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kristin. If there are no objections, I will now close the public hearing, and we'll have council discussion. The questions for the council are on the screen. So who would like to begin the discussion? And if there's no discussion and everyone's in agreement, who would like to make a motion?
I'd like to move this, I'd like to move the staff recommendation. Councilmember Ready?
Second, Councilmember Aguirre.
Okay, a motion has been made, and I noticed that there are two actions, two motions. I'd like to be sure with the city attorney that if we have one vote, can one vote cover both the resolution and the motion?
That is correct. Both items can be moved, and I believe Councilmember Ready moved the staff recommendation, which included both items.
Okay. So it was Councilmember Ready and seconded by Councilmember Aguirre. Is there any discussion? Would anyone like to speak at this moment? Hearing none. I'll ask our city clerk if she could call the roll, please.
We'll start with Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Councilmember G.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
And thank you so much for the staff report, Ms. Lancaster. Okay, item 8B, waive the first reading and inter- Okay, item 8B, waive the first reading and introduce zoning ordinance amendments to comply with state law and reduce barriers to childcare by increasing locations where childcare is allowed and streamlining the childcare review process. The Assistant Director of Community Development and Transportation, Sue X-line, will introduce the item, and Senior Planner, Apollo Rojas, will give a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Howard and council members. It's nice to meet you. I'm Sue X-line. I am the new Assistant Community Development and Transportation Director overseeing planning and GIS. I started here on March 1st, and I'm really looking forward to working with you all. So first, some background on the proposed amendments. In July 2020, there was a study session with the Planning Commission, and staff presented a work program for some upcoming zoning code updates. The goal of these updates was to bring our code into compliance with state law and to update and streamline processes. In December 2020, the Planning Commission separated the childcare amendments from the other zoning 2020 amendments, given the priority and urgency of the childcare amendments. Next slide, please. In keeping with the city council's strategic priorities, the goal of these amendments is to increase the amount and affordability of childcare spaces by streamlining the review process for all types of childcare, by making changes to the large family childcare homes and the childcare centers. In December 2020, the Planning Commission, with a vote of seven to zero, recommended approval of these amendments. I will turn over the presentation to Senior Planner, Apollo Rojas, who will present on the San Mateo County Childcare Needs Assessment and the proposed zoning code amendments.
Thanks, Ms. X-line. Good evening, Mayor Howard, city council members and the public. My name is Apollo Rojas. I'm a senior planner with the city. So I'll start with this slide. This shows questions for city council to think about during staff's presentation. First, should the city adopt the proposed changes to large family childcare homes? And then next, should the city adopt the proposed changes to childcare centers? So we also included alternatives. The city council may request modifications to any of the proposed zoning amendments tonight. Next slide, please. So the slide shows why the proposed changes are needed. These numbers are based on a 2017 San Mateo County Childcare Needs Assessment for the Redwood City Elementary School District. So with these first three columns showing a breakdown of age from infant preschool to school age, and then the fourth column on the right showing the accumulation or the total of those numbers. So the blue shows the childcare supply totaling 5,946 spaces in the district, while the red shows the additional childcare demand. And this demand number is based on the number of residents, the number of employees that work within the district, and the number of children. So looking at this chart, you can see there's a relative high need for both infant and preschool care, preschool care being from ages two to four, and then school-aged children, which is five to 12. The need is met more than the other age cohorts, but still an additional need there. So the red total showing 3,536 additional demand spaces. Next slide, please. So childcare is a key issue in our city, and it shows that our existing regulations with these demand numbers, that the market forces aren't providing sufficient numbers to meet those needs. Of those 9,286 total demand that was mentioned, there are 3,200 of those families that are below the 70% state median income level. So this graph again shows a breakdown, and this income group are seeing a larger need for infant care particularly. And then now as a good reminder that Redwood City has a few tools for those helping to either locate a childcare center or looking to start a childcare center. They can go visit to www redwoodcity.org/childcare. Next slide, please. So our existing childcare regulations. So childcare family homes are what we typically would call a daycare. These are operated out of a childcare provider's primary home, and they are divided into two categories, a small childcare home and a large childcare home. A small childcare home allows up to eight children with certain age-related circumstances related to that, and those are permitted by right by the city. Then there are large family childcare homes, and those can allow up to 14 children. And currently, those require a use permit for operation, and that involves a discretionary review. That process goes through our zoning administrator, and it requires notification of the surrounding 100 feet from the site and potentially a public hearing if one of the neighbors were to request one. So this can extend the review process by several weeks. Childcare centers, on the other hand, those are facilities that provide supervision, education, personal care on a less than 24-hour basis for children. These facilities are more likely to be located in employment centers. They don't, these don't include commercial businesses, like say, an indoor recreation center or indoor play space. And our regulations for in residential areas, they're only allowed in conjunction with a school or a church. And some in districts, they require a use permit, even if they're included within those school or church spaces. And in our commercial and mixed-use districts, these childcare centers require a use permit regardless of size. So these use permits, again, are discretionary, and they require review by the zoning administrator through a public hearing, which requires public noticing and can, again, add several weeks to the process. And so in some of these commercial areas, the childcare centers are required via the zoning to only serve the employees of that business and not be opened up to the general public. Next slide, please. So the proposed amendments for tonight would allow large family childcare homes by right in all zoning districts in order to comply with a state law. Small family childcare homes would still be permitted by right as well. And other amendments include amendments to childcare centers. These would include allowing them in residential areas with a use permit, and that also include allowing conversions of single-family homes with a use permit. In other areas, childcare centers would be permitted by right if they're accessory or secondary to a church, as these structures tend to have the existing infrastructure of parking and open space that are needed to operate a childcare home or childcare center, I should say. And then these proposed amendments would allow childcare centers in commercial and mixed-use districts as well for up to 60 children by right. And childcare centers of 61 or more children, those would require a use permit to be reviewed by the zoning administrator in a public hearing, as is our typical conditional use permit process. So both family care homes and childcare homes, these are all heavily regulated by the State Department of Social Services, the Childcare Licensing Division, and they have strict guidelines for square footage per child, for open play space per child, for number of employees per child, and then also, of course, fire safety standards. So just based on the Planning Commission's recommendations within the staff report and the proposed amendments that aim to meet the general plan goals and our city council strategic initiatives. Next slide, please. Again, here are the questions for city council to consider. That's the end of my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rojas. And Ms. X-line, welcome. Welcome to Redwood City. It's nice to have you with us.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Does the city council have any questions before we open up the public hearing? Seeing none. In order to see how many speakers we have, I ask everyone who wishes to speak, would you raise your hand now? At this time, I have five speakers. Does anyone else wish to speak to this item? Seeing none. We have five speakers, and the last speaker, excuse me, is Kristin Anderson, and there'll be no more public comment taken after she speaks. If any additional speakers queue up after the last called speaker, you'll be asked to email your public comment to thecitycouncil@redwoodcity.org. Each speaker will be given two minutes to speak, and I'll call the names in the order that hands were raised, two at a time. The timer will begin when you begin speaking. My first speaker is Heather Hopkins and then Pamela Campos.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Howard, council members and staff. I'm a consultant with Build Up for San Mateo County's Children, an organizing member of Community Equity Collaborative and the owner of a small childcare center in West Menlo Park. I'm speaking in support of the proposed zoning ordinance amendments that will reduce barriers to childcare by increasing the locations where childcare is allowed and streamlining the childcare review process. When my business partner, I began searching for a preschool facility in 2013, we contacted the owners of several commercial properties in Redwood City and Menlo Park, but unfortunately, none were willing to lease their facilities to a childcare business due to their concerns with liability and noise. The other properties we found were either not zoned for childcare or were deemed problematic for one reason or another. In one case, Redwood City planners discouraged further assessment of a site on El Comunial Real due to air quality concerns, for example. During this time, the city's childcare coordinator was an invaluable resource for us and for many others. After, finally, after a year and a half, we identified a single-family home in unincorporated Menlo Park to completely remodel in a very expensive two-year use permit process with the county. Our small childcare center is licensed for 24 children and is essentially indistinguishable from other single-family homes in the neighborhood. Typically, three or four staff are on-site at any time, and two families arrive or depart at a time by car, bicycle, or on foot. Arrivals and departures occur over several hours in the morning and late afternoon, so traffic and parking impacts are minimal. While neighbor concerns were very high at the beginning of the permitting process, hence the two-year use permit process, we're pleased that six years after our opening, our center is a beloved part of our community. Residentially-based childcare centers enhance the Redwood City community. Thank you so much, and I hope you support this change.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. Pamela Campos and then Lynn Tran.
Hello, good evening, Mayor Howard and honorable city council members and staff present. My name is Pamela Campos, and I am speaking on behalf of Build Up for San Mateo County's Children, a local initiative working to increase the supply of early care and education facilities across the county. Since Senate Bill 234, the Keeping Kids Close to Home Act, became law in January 2020, the ECE community has been urging cities to update their municipal code in compliance with the legislation that was enacted to break down barriers in local planning and zoning rules that make it difficult for family childcare providers to begin or expand their small businesses, as Heather Hopkins was just sharing with us. This legislation will also increase access to childcare for thousands of families who currently lack a licensed space for early care and education. Build Up applauds the phenomenal work that has been produced by the Redwood City Council, who named children and youth a priority in 2020 and have made tremendous progress in raising awareness for the need to develop more early care and education spaces, particularly for our most vulnerable populations. But the work is not done yet. We hope you will continue to champion your advocacy for our community's youngest residents and their families who work hard contributing to our local economy while also nurturing a prosperous generation for San Mateo County's future. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Campos. Lynn Tran and then Sarah Kinnahan.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Dear Mayor Howard and city council members, my name is Lynn Tran, and I am an in-home family-based provider in Redwood City. Just like many other providers here in Redwood City, we help countless of family watch their children so their parent can go to work, supporting their family and contributing to the society. We help create jobs for our employees and ourselves. We help the children develop love for learning and give them the first stepping stones to succeed in school. In the pre-pandemic time, we, like other family-based quality daycare providers in Redwood City, had turned away countless parents and children in our community, not because we didn't have a good program or an indoor and outdoor space to accommodate more children to roam and play, rather it was due to the limit of children that we are allowed to have, and the ratio was for small, for ages that made sense was six or 12. We understand that having more children, our neighbors might be concerned about the additional traffic, but like Heather mentioned earlier, there's a way to reduce that, and for example, by parents dropping off at different times and a lot of foot traffic, traffic, rather than car traffic. Home-based family providers, we're small business owner, and we do not have the capability to buy or rent separate buildings to run a center. It's just too much capital and risk for us. Also, finding a commercial real estate property with a backyard, outdoor place for children to play is challenging and impossible almost in commercial zones, also due to pollution, like Heather said. Residential homes are better properties for this purpose, but we cannot easily convert them at this point right now.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate your coming this evening. Our next speaker is Sarah Kinnahan and then Kristin Anderson.
Good evening again, Mayor Howard, council members and staff. Again, this is Sarah Kinnahan representing the San Mateo County Childcare Partnership Council. Our advisory council has long advocated for streamlining regulations for the development of childcare to make the process more transparent for potential childcare business operators and to make it easier for childcare programs to open up in areas with a compatible use. It's wonderful to see Redwood City considering an update to their zoning ordinance to reduce barriers for increasing the supply of childcare in the city. And we commend the city for taking steps to streamline these regulations so that more childcare programs can open up to meet the pressing community needs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And my last speaker is Kristin Anderson. Kristin, can you unmute yourself? There you go. There you go.
Good evening again, Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Hale, and council members. I retired as the city's childcare coordinator a year ago, December, after more than 25 years. During my years in that position, I helped many childcare and preschool operators to search for affordable facility space in churches, schools, and other buildings. Many, like Heather Hopkins, found no options here and either opened programs in other communities or gave up. State childcare licensing, state building and fire codes and ADA requirements already limit capacity, increase costs, and prevent the use of many sites. Childcare operators cannot afford commercial lease rates, and most do not have resources to buy and convert buildings as they struggle to pay teachers a living wage in this high-cost area. I respectfully ask you to support the proposed ordinance changes. The policies will facilitate siting and help to reduce barriers to development. Since the 1980s, our city council members, including many of you, have been leaders on childcare, and our field does appreciate that. Also, I want to thank planners Lindy Chan and Apollo Rojas for their sincere efforts to understand the complexity of childcare development and operations, which is evident in this staff report and their work on other policies and projects. Thank you.
And thank you for your service to Redwood City, Kristin. If any additional speakers queued up after our last speaker, you'll be asked to email your public comment to thecitycouncil@redwoodcity.org, and it will be shared with our city council. at council@redwoodcity.org, and it will be shared with our city council. If there are no objections, I will close the public hearing and open it up for council discussion. Who would like to begin? The questions for the council are on the screen. Vice Mayor Hale.
Thank you, Mayor. I shot my hand up in fear that this would get an immediate motion, and I wouldn't have the chance to say a few words. Say my apologies to the community and my colleagues know, but I've had internet issues. Internet's been going in and out, and I threw my back out, so I'm staying off, staying horizontal and off the video for this evening. I, it should come as no surprise to my colleagues that I'll be enthusiastically supporting these changes. What childcare has historically been treated in this country is as a personal problem. You have a child, it is now your problem to find childcare for that child. And what COVID exposed is that this is actually a workforce problem, and it's an infrastructure problem. And just as cities need to permit housing so that people have a place to live and roads or trains so they have a place to drive or a way to get to work, we have to permit more locations for childcare to exist. Now, COVID has had a really, has had disastrous impacts across the board, in particular on women's careers, with millions of women leaving the workforce. And we need reliable, safe, and affordable childcare to ensure families can return to work. So I see this as an investment in our recovery. Without childcare, there will be no economic recovery. I'm really glad that we had, we heard tonight from an in-home provider. In-home childcare providers are more likely to be women, to be single moms, and to be women of color. And these women enable dozens, a dozen or more people in our community to just be able to go to work. So they are essential, and we have to treat their zoning needs with as much urgency as we treat large commercial projects. I also want to give a shout out to Karina Barbera, who I see on the call. We know her in my house as Ms. Karina. She leads Beresford Montessori Preschool, where my daughters attended prior to COVID. As the caller referenced, after COVID, providers like hers were forced to reduce the number of children they served while still saying, paying the same overhead costs. But even prior to COVID, they had to offer a shorter day, ending at three, due to the other uses in the building that they were not able to rent their building for the full day because it was being used by multiple renters. And so there again was a lost opportunity for more families to have a full day of childcare. And as the staff slide showed, we have a supply and demand issue. So simply put, I think tonight we can help to create more supply. And I hope Ms. Karina doesn't mind me calling her out, and I would urge our council to support these changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Get better soon now. Councilmember G.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Ms. Xline, welcome to Redwood City and hope it's a long career here. Just a couple of quick questions. Mr. Rojas, on your slide number five of 10, you reference Redwood City School District. I was interested to know if there was any data for the Belmont River Shore School District and Redwood Shores with regard to the data you've shown in this slide.
Unfortunately, that area just covers the Redwood City Elementary School District.
I would assume that the childcare needs out in the shores and in the Belmont River Shore School District, there's a need, it was just not shown in the slide, so hopefully future data can capture that. The second thing in the last slide about recommendations, about alternatives, does the council have the discretion to not follow SB 243 or 234, excuse me?
I might look for to our city attorney's office for some support, but I don't believe that we are able to, we are required to allow large family childcare homes by right.
Right. I mean, that's the third bullet suggests we have free range. I mean, the narrow range, I mean, the range of alternatives is pretty small, given what you covered in SB 234, I would think. No, I would, I am in support of the findings and the staff recommendation. I mean, when we had our first son, we had, the only way we could both work here was in-home daycare. The need is, exists, and it's gotten worse, and hopefully this will help provide more providers of daycare because the need hasn't gone away, it's actually gotten worse. And with COVID, it has shown how large the infrastructure need is, so I'm very supportive of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember G. Councilmember Ready.
Thank you, Mayor Howard, and thank you to my council colleagues for your comments. They were, I wanted to merely thank staff. Also, welcome, Ms. Xline, very happy to have you on board and look forward to meeting with you in person. And just to also thank staff for separating the childcare proposed zoning amendments from the others because this is something that has been extraordinarily needed in our community. And this is just yet one more example of how our staff is responding with sensitivity to something that is an extraordinary need. I completely support the findings and the recommendations that staff is making to us.
Thank you, Councilmember Ready. Councilmember Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Howard. I appreciate it. I also would like to thank city staff, as well as all of our speakers who came to share their thoughts about the relaxation or the alteration of these zoning codes in reference to our ability to bring childcare. We should definitely be looking to remove barriers to bring this critical infrastructure to our city. You know, as you saw in the slide from city staff, we are at a deficit, and we need to do all things within our power to move that needle. I did have a question for city staff in the, I was a part of the planning commission. When you kind of first analyzed the implications of these zoning changes, I'm wondering, and it also mentions this in the staff report, that there was general interest, and I remember this, for including a floor area incentive and potentially limiting parking ratio requirements. I'm wondering if you could kind of talk a little bit about that, you know, what we can do to kind of get those, you know, additional elements moved forward, perhaps at a future date, maybe tonight, I don't know. But any thoughts or comments around that would be great.
Yeah, Councilmember Smith, thank you. There are existing sort of floor area exemptions or floor area bonuses allowed by the state for larger childcare facilities. So what we did, we moved some of that from our definition sections just to our childcare section to make it more visible. But as far as our city going above and beyond those state requirements, that would require some additional research and additional outreach on our end.
Okay, great. I would definitely encourage, I mean, maybe tonight is not the night, considering that we need additional research to be done, but I would definitely like to see those additional barriers studied and potentially looked at so that we can get them removed to bring additional childcare.
Our city attorney has her hand raised. Ms. Ramirez.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith, I just wanted to make sure that both parts of your question were answered. And I think, Mr. Rojas, you spoke to the floor area exemptions, but maybe not the parking relaxations. I don't know, Mr. Rojas, if you would like to speak to what the council can do tonight with regard to parking.
Sure thing. Thank you for that, Ms. Ramirez. Our parking, we're establishing a parking requirement for childcare where previously we did not have a parking requirement for childcare centers. So essentially, it's one parking space per employee plus an additional parking space for every 10 employees. So, you know, when you, for a visitor space, pick-up and drop-off area. I believe Councilmember Smith, when he was with the planning commission, made a suggestion about potentially observing if we can lower the threshold for the bonus spaces to, for every 15 employees requiring an additional space. So that's certainly something the council could direct staff to, to amend the parking requirements to be a little less strict. That's an option.
Yeah, and I appreciate you bringing that up, Apollo, and just giving the kind of reminder, background story around that, especially considering one of our speakers mentioned the fact that parking actually was less of a concern than the neighborhood actually thought they would originally have to face. And so, you know, if any of my council colleagues are interested in rethinking that parking ratio, I would definitely be in support of that as well.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Thank you, staff, for this presentation. I think this is so needed. You know, I don't know if many folks know, but Kenyatta College offers an early childhood education program for teachers. And their dream, and I have a lot of them as students, is to open up their own daycare. And to look at these new policies to make it easier for them, I think, is just a great thing. They're in our community, they're going to school here, and then they'll be able to serve many families that we have. And I hope this also encourages businesses like the Kaisers and the hospitals and some of the companies that are on the shores to really think about the importance of adding child development or early childhood programs to their businesses as well. Because I think that, you know, having them in their neighborhoods and the workplace is just needed. As my council, Vice Mayor Hale mentioned, the importance to families that has been not only through this pandemic, but before and after, to be able to have a safe place in your workplace or in your neighborhood is just something that parents will always appreciate, you know, for years to come and remember those things. So I want to thank all of us for really moving forward with something that's such a benefit to our community and cleaning it up so that it's really more accessible, and it's a policy that serves everyone.
Thank you. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Hi, yeah, I just wanted to second everyone's points before, especially what Councilmember Smith said about relaxing the parking on these, at these locations. I think that'd be really helpful, you know, maybe because we're quarantined still. You know, it's becoming relaxed, but, you know, we have kind of maybe forgotten a little bit about how bad the commuting experience has been. But that reality is going to be hitting us in the face, I think, relatively soon. And so I think it'd be great to then, you know, look into that for many reasons on top of, as many of us know, because it'd be best to have pedestrian-friendly walkways and bicycles and such like that. Generally, I am very much forward, in favor of the of this recommendation, and overall, I'm happy with the study. I think it's great. It's a great benefit to the, to the community that we, that we supply more caregiving, care providers for children. I worked as a pre-K assistant for a year before I got laid off due to COVID, not because I was, it was terrible. I really enjoyed it, you know, I've had courses in child development and just had the pleasure of working with children. And we're very, as, you know, as Councilmember Hale mentioned, it's a very gendered occupation, mostly women. And so it's seen as feminine labor, and therefore, like, we're some of the lowest-paid people. And even though we're a very valuable and essential part of the community as a whole. So, you know, we have to start validating an overall feminine labor as real labor and worth the, worth the cost of it because of how much it's, because it's not just raising children, it's like developing people, you know, and like, many of you may know, may not know, but like, children take a long time, you know, to develop on like, you know, like, like a horse, when they're born, they can walk in a few, like, in a little bit. You know, they're born, they can start walking soon, you know, but people, they're very intelligent, and they take a lot of time to grow, and that's why we have this whole, like, large adolescent stage and pre-teens, you know, like, and then teenager stuff, like, it's heavy hormonal stuff, lots of changes. But it's because we're so intelligent, and that requires a lot of care, a lot of attention, you know, and a lot of respect for, for learning, you know. And so, you know, I just wanted to share that, you know, I really appreciate the work of these care providers, these educators of our very small youth. You know, and I hope that we continue the work that validates them and affirms them and their, and their, and the ways that they give back to us. So, so thank you again. I'm looking forward to voting on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Espinoza Garnica. I was going to say, I am very supportive of the staff, the report and the recommendations that were made. I also wanted to say thank you for separating the issues from the next item that we will be discussing because it kind of raised it to a new height of awareness and importance, which it certainly is. And I'm really pleased with that, that we had a chance to do this healthy discussion around childcare. As Vice Mayor Hale said, it's an investment, not only in our COVID recovery, but it's an investment in our families in Redwood City. Regarding the relaxing of parking standards, I think I would like more information possibly from 4Cs or other groups or organizations who may have some information as to the state requirements, how they're going. Have they, do they have any examples of cities who have relaxed standards and, and has it been successful? I think we're taking a big giant step here tonight, and I just want to be careful that before we do relax parking standards, that we do get more information so we know what the possible consequence of that might be or not. And maybe it isn't an issue, but I think it, we owe it to find out more information. But I, at this time, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to see if any, oh, Councilmember Smith, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. I'm really curious to see if, you know, folks are interested moving the resolution with the caveats, change in parking ratio to lower from 10 to 15 bonus parking spots. So that is my, my motion that I'd like to make, just to see if I can get a second for that.
Like a second, I'd like to second Councilmember Smith's motion.
So the motion's been made by Councilmember Smith to accept the motion with the addition of relaxing parking standards, as was mentioned, and seconded by Councilmember Espinoza Garnica. Discussion, Vice Mayor Hale. Oh, I'm sorry, I see.
I see Apollo, and now the city attorney.
Yeah. So we'll start, who would like to start, Mr. Rojas or Ms. Ramirez?
I'll take a backseat to Ms. Ramirez. I was going to speak about the parking issue.
Mr. Rojas, if you'd like to speak to policy, please feel free. I was just going to clarify the motion and the added, the changed language.
Yeah, I'll let you do that.
Okay. So Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Espinoza Garnica, I just want to clarify that you are moving to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance as proposed by staff and the planning commission with the exception of Section 30.5 Subsection D.7. Instead of reading childcare centers, one parking space is required per employee plus one additional space for every 10 employees. It will read one parking space is required per employee plus one additional space for every 15 employees.
Yes, that's correct.
And now I'd like to ask Mr. Rojas if he would elaborate on the change and if he has any information that may help make this decision easier.
No, I was just going to make that same clarifying point Ms. Ramirez made regarding the clarity of the motion.
So you're not going to help me here with whether 4Cs or there's a city that has information available that they have tried relaxed parking standards.
I'm sorry about that, Ms. Mayor Howard.
That's okay.
So other municipalities that have a parking standard, for example, Mountain View has that same parking standard of one space per employee plus an additional space for every 15 employees. Other cities have 10. I think I've seen some as high, and I don't think locally as plus an additional space for every 20 employees. So 15 certainly would strike within the realm of what's been approved in the surrounding. strike within the realm of what's been approved in the surrounding neighboring cities.
And Ms. Xline, would you like to add to that?
I don't think so. I think that my assessment would be the same as Apollo, that the additional, there is a space required for every employee, so that this isn't a significant change. The 15 versus the 10 is a minor, I think, minor adjustment.
Well, that was very helpful. Thank you, both of you. I see hands raised. Vice Mayor Hale.
Thank you. And should Apollo have not been so quick to respond, which was wonderful, I did want to point out that we do have Kristin Anderson on the line, and she was a longtime staffer and I believe knows these policies cold. But I am supportive of reducing relaxing. Most of the parking needed for childcare is drop-off and pickup. So it's just one time, quick in, quick out. So I'm supportive of it. And but if we needed further input, I think Kristin would be, she looks like she's still on the call.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ready?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. I am feeling very dense at the moment because I can't imagine how changing the parking from 10 to 15, our requirement from 10 to 15 is relaxing the standard. It sounds like the opposite. What we're doing is requiring more spaces for, and so to me, we are doing the opposite of relaxing the standard, but we're actually making the standard higher for parking.
Thank you for bringing that up. I think we'll get some clarification. Ms. Xline?
Sure. It is confusing. It's, so instead of one for every 10 employees, it's one for every 15. So it just means-
All right, yeah, I see that. Okay, then I do support that change.
Thank you. And if Kristin Anderson is on the line, would she like to, from her past experience with the city and her current experience, would you like to add anything to what's already been said? There, I do see her. And Kristin, if you do not have anything in addition to say, that's fine, too.
I'm not sure I can quote any specific cities at this point. I know that more have been moving to, especially in urban areas where there is better transit, to reducing the parking requirements, and even just allowing parent drop-off and pickup at the curb side without any onsite parking requirement.
Thank you so much. So motion has been made by councilmember Smith and seconded by councilmember Espinoza Garnica. If there's no other discussion, I'll ask the city clerk if she'll call the roll, please.
Yes, we'll start with councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Councilmember G.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you, everyone, for a very healthy discussion. Item 8C, waive the first reading and introduce zoning ordinance amendments related to housing, accessory outdoor commercial uses, permit applicability, residential open space requirements, non-conforming structures, and other zoning revisions to address changes in state law and support process improvements. Our Assistant Director of Community Development and Transportation, Sue Xline, will introduce this item, and senior planner Apollo Rojas will give a presentation. You're welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Howard again, and councilmembers. Sue Xline, Assistant Community Development and Transportation Director. For tonight's presentation, I will provide an overview of recent public hearings the city has held to review the zoning 2020 updates for miscellaneous zoning amendments, and then pass it over to our senior planner, Apollo Rojas, to provide an overview of the proposed changes, followed by the planning commission's recommendations. He will also review questions for city council. Principal Planner Diana Odell is also available to assist with questions. The zoning ordinance requires regular updates to keep up with ongoing changes in the city. There are existing regulations that require updating due to changes in state law or that require process improvements. The proposed zoning 2020 update is a collection of amendments meant to address a variety of required changes. The planning commission held a hearing, a study session in July of 2020, and in December 2020, voted six to one to adopt a resolution recommending the approval of the zoning amendments. I will now pass the presentation over to senior planner Apollo Rojas.
Yes, Ms. Xline. Good evening, Mayor Howard, city council members, public. My name is Apollo Rojas, senior planner with the city. So again, I'll start with slides for questions for city council to think about during staff's presentation. And again, with an alternative from our staff report. So first question, should the city implement proposed amendments to permit applicability? Next, should the city implement proposed housing-related amendments? And then, should the city implement proposed miscellaneous amendments? So again, they're an alternative to request modifications to propose zoning amendments when thinking about these three different areas. So next slide, please. I'll start with permit applicability. The city is really doing three things to streamline the process for housing here. We're extending the time that a permit is applicable, removing certain redundant requirements for multifamily development, and we're removing an additional requirement for condominium developments, for sale developments. So the first would be an amendment that would extend the permit applicability from one year to two years. And then, a proposed amendment that would remove a planned development permit requirement for multifamily development in the R2 zoning district. This is the only zoning district where this requirement is stated this way. And then finally, to remove a planned development permit as a requirement for condominium permits. Those condominium permits have their own review process and other permits that are required in order to adopt them. So this is sort of an extra redundant step in this process. Thank you. Next slide, please. And so now moving on to housing-related amendments. So I'll start with open space here. Our zoning code requires residential development to meet certain open space standards. This is separate from other standards such as setbacks or floor areas. It's its own individual requirement. And currently, the city does not allow neither front yards or street yard setbacks to be counted towards this open space area. So on this slide, the front yard would be the bottom of the screen in front of the home, and the second street side would be the shaded area on the left side of the home, on the left side of the screen. The proposed amendments would allow these open areas to be counted towards zoning open space requirements. And then the other amendment here would be corner lots, that I'll use this visual for. The proposed amendments would allow the zoning administrator the ability to make determinations on the orientation of the setbacks for corner lots and irregular lots based on the fit with the context of the neighborhood. Current regulations have a very narrow definition for defining lot orientation that's based on measurements of the lot only. And the proposed amendments would ease the ability to do minor additions to homes based on the irregular conditions that one might face on a site. Next slide, please. And the last housing-related amendment is duplexes. So existing regulations require duplex or two units to be attached. However, there are not strict regulations on how these two units need to be attached. So this slide shows an example of a duplex in the city that's connecting both units, you know, one on the left, you know, two on the right, with a carport. We've seen other duplex that are connected with a breezeway, which is essentially just a roof connecting the two units. The proposed amendments would remove the requirement for the two dwelling units to be connected in order to be built. The amendments, the intent of it is to promote flexibility in development, and the units could be either attached or detached with the proposed changes. Next slide, please. And then moving on to miscellaneous amendments. State law requires cities to allow low-barrier navigation centers in mixed-use zoning districts. The proposed amendments would include updates to text in our land use tables within our zoning ordinance to show that it is allowed use and to show that we are complying with state law. The next amendment would be to regulations for repairs and expansions of legal non-conforming structures. A non-conforming structure is generally a building or a home that was built legally. But regulations have changed, and now the structure no longer complies with current zoning. Typically, this is due to setbacks. Redwood City, it's a city that's over 150 years old, and there are a number of structures that are not conforming in the city. The amendments would simplify and clarify regulations to repair and to expand these legal non-conforming structures and in order to still allow additions to existing homes, usually some of our more mature homes, without having to tear down sections of an entire home or alternatively to demolish an entire home in order to meet our zoning, our current zoning requirements. And then our minor revisions, those include updates to the ordinance that are to edit out typos or to move text around within the code. So one would be to delete a duplicate reasonable accommodations article, and the other would be to move our home occupation standards from our definition section to its own section that is a lot more visible. Next slide, please. And so finally, miscellaneous amendments to outdoor uses. These are commercial outdoor uses. In many of our commercial zoning districts, the zoning code currently requires a use permit and a public hearing for any outdoor activity on private property, but only requires an administrative encroachment permit for uses on the sidewalk. So as the slide shows, the proposed amendments would allow businesses such as restaurants or retail businesses to use parking spaces next to the building. And this could be for outdoor dining or display of goods. Next slide, please. So the staff report and the attachments, they contain the proposed zoning amendments that were recommended by the planning commission, and staff will leave the slide up for our city council to review. They'll go for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rojas. And thank you, Ms. Xline. Are there any questions clarifying before I open up the public hearing? Seeing none, in order, I'll now open the public hearing. In order to see how many speakers we have, I ask that everyone who wishes to speak, please raise your hand now. I have no public speakers at this time. Seeing no public speakers, and if there are no objections, I will close the public hearing, and we'll open it up now to council discussion. Councilmember Ready?
Thank you, Mayor Howard, and thank you, Mr. Rojas, for this report. So just to be in the spirit of full disclosure, do you see any, because I'm always supportive of trying to make life better for staff, and so I embrace the opportunity to remove redundant or other elements of your job that, you know, are creating a problem. But do you honestly see anything that might be a negative on that I'm going to regret later?
This is regarding the removal of the planned development permits for multifamily development and condominiums?
No, 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 not that. I mean, any of these, any of these, do you see any, so for instance, the allowing public, the commercial to use its space without anything, without a permit, right? The example you used is that a restaurant might use parking spaces. So could you not see a restaurant taking up its parking spaces without any restriction? And then that becoming a problem? I can see that as being a problem. I can see that as a potential problem.
Yeah, certainly. And there would be performance standards associated with that. So they wouldn't be able to use the entire parking lot. I believe it'd only be limited to 30% of the total parking lot area, but they couldn't use parking spaces that are not adjacent to the site. So the immediately adjacent parking spaces can be used, but they can't take up more than 30% of the total spaces for the site.
And, okay, taking that, thank you for that. And using 30% forever or for a weekend? Or what are we, I mean, is there a timeframe that is permissible or?
Yeah, I mean, this is certainly something that could be adjusted as time goes on by the council as we come hopefully regularly with more zoning updates to kind of update and approve our code. But these particular spaces, they would be allowed full-time. It wouldn't be like a 90-day limit or a six-month limit. This would be for whenever the business is open.
Okay, so I can see being supportive of the staff recommendation with perhaps an update from staff to let us know how it's going in all of these categories, just to let us know that there have been no unintended consequences. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, councilmember Ready. I think that's a good suggestion. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? I see no hands. Oh, councilmember Aguirre.
Along the lines of councilmember Ready, are there going to be any type of policies on how those parking spots are used? What kind of, I don't know, I've seen really nice outdoor sitting and I've seen really ugly outdoor sitting and barriers in the downtown. And I know the businesses are struggling right now and they've done a great job to do it. But how can we have some conformity that goes with the downtown and that is inviting? And that, I don't know, we have any type of policy like that, or if that's something that we're going to look into once we complete this one?
Yeah, so as part of the performance standards that are associated with these outdoor areas, they'd only be allowed to operate during hours of operation. They would only be located in those immediately adjacent areas, so very next to them. And they could have outdoor furniture, we do have outdoor furniture standards for, that allow things like umbrellas, heaters, and other equipment. But as far as like design standards for what individual businesses can have, we're not, the proposed amendments wouldn't allow for a regulation of design of those particular outdoor amenities.
Thank you.
Mr. Munzer, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, sorry, Mayor Howard. Councilmember Aguirre, just to follow up to your question, though staff is working on a program for having more definitive and outdoor business program that would be predominantly, you know, in the downtown area, that we relax standards in reference to COVID in order to encourage business to our restaurants. And we're looking at developing a more permanent program that will talk about consistency in design and furniture. And so that, understanding that this is probably something that will likely accommodate as we transition in- as we transition in and out of COVID.
Did that answer your question, council member Aguirre?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Munzer.
Thank you. Council member Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. I have a couple of quick questions for Mr. Rojas. My first question is, how many non-conforming structures currently exist in the city of Redwood City?
There's a significant amount. However, I don't know that there's an easy way of compiling that type of data, specifically when it comes to setbacks, you know, for our missing middle update. I know that we did study lot areas, lot widths, lot size compatibility with our current zoning standards. And there was a significant number that were non-conforming. But it would be very, very difficult to obtain an accurate number. I would say a lot, Redwood City, 150 years old. Our current zoning as we know it with the, that we've modeled after and that we've improved was established in 1964. So there was a significant amount of development prior to our current sort of setback standards.
Great. And would you say that city staff spends a lot of time dealing with these non-conforming issues at the moment?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, got it. Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Munzer, you had your hand raised?
I'm sorry, Mayor. I forgot to lower.
Oh. Vice Mayor Hale?
Yeah, following up on council member Smith's question as relates to the non-conforming structures and the missing middle work plan. This is, this work is separate from that work stream. Is that right, Mr. Rojas? That work has yet to see the council dais, so we haven't yet looked at that work?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And when are we expected to see that work?
I will defer to Mr. Munzer. Or perhaps our city?
Sorry about that. So Vice Mayor Hale, the missing middle conversation will be all part of the housing element conversation.
Great. Thank you. So that's a plan just for my colleagues. Pretty sure most of them have heard about it, but plan developed by the HHCC that would help a number of these units that are, were in previously upzoned areas that are no longer upzoned to be able to make modifications in the future and to grow.
Thank you. I wanted to mention, and I don't know who would like to answer this, but the council received a letter this afternoon expressing concern with the changes to the zoning ordinance, Article 33, Section 3310 and 3311. They're concerned the provisions that require non-conforming structures be brought into compliance before undergoing major improvements are diminished and they feel these important protections must be preserved. Could you address that? Is there a reason to be concerned about this?
Yeah, what we're trying to do with these updates is really clarify what constitutes a repair and, you know, what constitutes an addition or an expansion. And so making it helpful for both staff and, you know, members of the public looking to add on to their home as, you know, their living or household situation changes able to incrementally add on to their home if their home is not conforming. So the changes are meant to be a lot clearer and be helpful for additions.
But you're feeling that there are assurances in place that improvements will be done properly?
That's correct. Any new additions would have to meet our current zoning regulations. So, you know, where our current non-conforming ordinance does not allow a sort of extension of non-conformities by right. So that, I think that addresses that issue.
Thank you. I appreciate that. If there's no other discussion, would someone like to make a motion at this point?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to move the recommendation.
Vice Mayor Hale's made the motion and is that council member ready?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Has made the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the city clerk if she'll call the roll, please.
We'll start with council member Aguirre.
Yes.
Council member Espinoza Garnica?
Yes.
Council member G?
Yes.
Council member ready?
Yes.
Council member Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale?
Yes.
And Mayor Howard?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Exline, and thank you, Mr. Rojas. And thank you, Mr. Munzer, too, for being here to answer questions. Appreciate it. Now, moving on to item number nine, matters of council interest. I have something, but I'll wait to hear from my colleagues. Are there any city council member report of conferences attended or meetings that you would like to share? Seeing none, 9B, city council committee reports, communications subcommittee. I believe that's Vice Mayor Hale will give the update. Vice Mayor Hale?
Sorry, Mayor. I was pulling up my notes. Yes, so the communications subcommittee consists of myself, council member Aguirre and council member Smith. And we met on Thursday, March 11th. We met so that we could review the draft strategic plant communications plan, which outlines our objectives, tools and activities aimed at helping us improve and strengthen communication and engagement with the community. We discussed effective communication strategies to improve public access to information in a timely, accurate, accessible and helpful way about our city and our services. Then we did a brainstorm on ways to reach and welcome new residents to Redwood City and then to all residents by council district. So thinking about how we would communicate by council members and by council district. And we underscored the importance of strengthening the city's image and branding. And we are planning on holding a special meeting in the near future to review some preliminary police data dashboards, including police personnel data. And we have talked about meeting more frequently, perhaps every other month. So we'll look forward to those meetings in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale. The governance subcommittee, council member ready, will give us an update.
Mayor Howard. The governance committee is made up of Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Hale and myself. In preparation for the upcoming city council district election redistricting process, the governance committee met with the city's redistricting, demographer consultant, redistricting partners. Redistricting partners presented redistricting, I'm going to have difficulty with that word, process options and timelines. The three redistricting process options presented included a city council-driven process, a citizen advisory committee process and an independent redistricting commission process. The committee voted to recommend utilizing a citizen advisory committee-driven process, which includes final map approval by the city council. The governance committee recommended the establishment of a city council-appointed 11-member citizen advisory committee comprising of seven members of the committee representing one member of the public from each of the city's seven city council election districts and four at-large members. Additionally, the committee recommended that staff and the public utilize District R redistricting mapping software as part of the city's redistricting process. The full city council is scheduled to discuss the redistricting process and government, the governance committee recommendations at the April 26th city council meeting. The committee also discussed city council meeting management and made the following three recommendations. Adjusting the start time of regular city council meetings from 7:00 to 6:00 for the remainder of 2021 with the option of reevaluating the effectiveness of the earlier start time in six months. Reduce public comment from three minutes to two minutes. And during study session meetings, hold public comment after council discussion of the item so as no formal action will be taken on the item during that meeting because it's a study session. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, council member ready. And now, before I turn it over to our city manager, I wanted to make this very, very exciting announcement for those who haven't heard already that our Redwood City Public Library was named a finalist for 2021, the Institute of Museum and Life Services National Medal for Museum and Library Service. Redwood City's Public Library is the only institution in California who was selected as a finalist for this award. There are 30 finalists for the 2021 National Medal. And as I said, we were the only one in California who was nominated. It's the nation's highest honor given to museums and libraries that demonstrate significant impact in their communities. This award has been given for over 25 years and I couldn't be more excited about our Redwood City Library at this time, at this particular time, being nominated. To celebrate this honor, IMLS is encouraging Redwood City Public Library's community members to share stories, memories, pictures and videos on social media as part of the Share Your Story campaign using the hashtag IMLS medals information. And please visit the IMLS website. Let's talk up Redwood City. The National Medal winners will be announced in late spring and representatives will be honored for their extraordinary contributions during a virtual national medal ceremony this summer. To see the full list of finalists and learn more about the National Medal, please visit the IMLS website. Please join me in congratulating our Redwood City Public Library. They are so well-deserved and I just want to keep thinking positive thoughts that they received this high honor. Congratulations, Derek, and everyone who works with the library. Now I'd like to turn it over to our city manager, Melissa Stevens Diaz, for her update.
Thank you very much, Mayor Howard. I have three updates tonight. I wanted to give an update related to our COVID-19 cases and vaccination efforts. Also, a brief update related to our Slow Streets program and address encampments in Redwood City. So first with COVID-19, I wanted to report that as of last week, the case rate in Redwood City was 609 cases per 10,000 residents. And this is up from 594 cases for 10,000 a month ago. And it's about double the rate that we experienced in early December. So it's not rising as quickly as it was earlier this calendar year, but it has remained high and has not dropped at all since, in recent months. I think we all know that vaccination is the key to getting out of the pandemic along with continued masking, distancing and hand washing. And countywide, a total of 214,838 individuals have received at least one COVID-19 vaccination shot as of last week. Given the limited doses available, the county is shifting away from large-scale mass vaccination sites and towards smaller targeted clinics to communities in need. And I'm pleased that last Saturday, March 20th, we were partnering with the county to offer a vaccination clinic in the parking lot area next to the North Fair Oaks Community Center. This event was made possible in part by the offering of time through many employees and many departments. We had 11 fire department staff, six police department staff and 10 employees from a range of other departments, including Parks, Recreation and Community Services, Public Works and our city attorney, who provided translation services all day long. And together, all of these employees helped to support our community members be vaccinated. We had nine of our fire staff actually directly providing vaccinations in the afternoon. And so a total of over 661 people were offered vaccines that day. And this event really supported neighborhood seniors and those in that community who are at risk for contracting COVID-19. I expect we will continue to help in offering this important local service. And then we also expect to continue supporting the mass vaccination sites when supply increases and the county is able to offer both mass vaccination as well as neighborhood-serving vaccinations. I'm pleased as well that we were able to provide vaccines to participants in the city's safe RV parking program that same day. Turning now to the Slow Streets program, I wanted to mention that we are working on looking at what next steps mean for the Slow Streets. And we're looking at that specific to individual streets and neighborhoods. When we conducted a survey to get feedback, we heard a lot of interest in continuing the program through the pandemic. And we haven't really defined what that means. So we'll need to get additional clarity on what through the pandemic means and how long we might continue the program. We're also doing work to estimate what it would cost to replace damaged and missing signs and to make barriers less easily removed. So that may in fact end up taking a little more money than we had originally anticipated. Once we know that, we'll come back to the city council and seek further authority as needed. And last, I wanted to share, we're certainly aware of the number of people who are living outdoors on public lands in Redwood City, certainly in the region, but noticeably in Redwood City. And we did meet last week with representatives from Caltrans, the California Highway Patrol and the county regarding homeless encampments on state lands in Redwood City. We intend to work together, reinforcing, offering services to those currently living in encampments and also providing cleanup. And so there will be additional information in the coming weeks about potential cleanups and service provision for residents at those sites. Importantly, we're also working on longer-term solutions to address issues with those who are homeless. And we'll be bringing additional recommendations to the city council at a study session in May. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz. Our next city council member will be April 12th, 2021. I want to thank you all for being with us this evening and I hope you and your families stay healthy and safe. Have a good week. Good night.